I'd like to open the Planning Commission meeting with the North Rock Planning Commission. Welcome everyone here today. Ms. Kisha, would you please call the roll?
Alexander.
Here.
Blasko.
Here.
Chambers.
Present.
Deets.
Yes.
Foster.
Here.
Harris.
Philip.
Here.
White. Chairman Clifton.
Here.
Do I hear motion?
Excuse the members not present.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We excuse those members not present. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also, we're glad to have Ward Three Alderman Steve Baxter here with us tonight. Let me remind you to please turn off your cell phones now. And if you have a copy of the agenda, our planning commission procedures are on the back of that. And please, if you come to speak, speak into the microphone and give us your name, please. And with that, Mr. Spencer?
Just want to give you a quick update in your package. There is a little memo about what happened last month at city council with the planning commission items. So I'll give you a little update on that. And item four on our agenda today is postponed, so the six bedroom bed and breakfast at 109 West Fifth has been postponed to next month.
So if you are here for that hearing, it will not be heard today. Be glad for you to stay with us, or you may be excused. Mr. Chambers?
Yes, Mr. Spencer, regarding the memo about city council action, just to clarify, when we place conditions on an item, are those conditions attached to the item? And when they approve it, they approve it with those conditions? Or do they have to re-nominate or re-propose those conditions? Or how's that handled?
They're sent with the conditions that you vote on, and they're welcome to add more conditions to it.
Or subtract.
Or subtract, yes. But when it gets sent, it gets sent, this is what the planning commission voted on, with this vote on this date.
With these conditions?
With the, yes.
Okay. Because many times, those conditions are hard thought, in terms of their wording, and how they, just to help the persons that are neighbors and such, and try and find a happiness point, you know, with everybody. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have been submitted a copy of the minutes of our previous meetings. Are there any additions or corrections?
Move for approval.
Move made and seconded. Motion made and seconded to be approved as submitted. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Under our development review, Mr. Chambers, as chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Development Review Committee met and considered item SD 2016-46, Spring Hill Development Lot 9, Block 4, to vacate a plat located at the northeast corner of Spring Hill and Stockton. The applicant made his presentation and agreed to all the requirements for vacation. And with that, the Development Review Committee recommended approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. That be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners on the application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item B is 2016-48, Interplan Office Park Lots 2A, B, and C, replat of Lot 1, of one lot into three lots, and site plan review of Lot 2A for ProSource located at 7201 Interplan Drive. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 11 and subsections. And with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. That be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners on the application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item C is SD 2016-49, Copper's Edition Lot 1, preliminary plat and site plan review of an industrial office located at 1651 Van Street. The applicant was present and he agreed to items 1 through 12 and subsections. And with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners on the application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item D is SD 2016-50, Keaton Edition Lot 1, preliminary plat of a lot located near the southeast corner of Cary and Remount. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 11. And with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. That it be approved as submitted. Anyone like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? Mr. Foster?
Yes, I know our Development Committee approved this with these conditions, but one of the conditions on here is not real clear, and I want to make sure that's clear. I know it's one of our aldermen is here, and want to make sure that he understands, and they understand, that our commission, our committee did recommend wavering the half-street. And it doesn't really read that clear on here on item number 5B. I know we have to, whether we approve it or not, has to get a waiver through city council, but our committee did vote to waive half the street improvements for this project.
Right, it's, Ms. Foster, we normally write it, unless, if they don't get the waiver from city council, they have to build them.
That's correct.
So what this states is, you have to build them, or you have to get a waiver. And that's where it was left.
Well, I just want to make sure that city council knows that the intent of our recommendation, that's all I'm saying. And Sean and I have visited about that, and I think we can clear that up with a little bit different language in that description.
Okay. It kind of goes back with what Mr. Chambers was talking about earlier. If this were sent to the council with these provisions, they would not know that the commission recommended waiver of those unless it was pointed out to them.
That's my point.
The subdivision items or Design Review Committee are a little different. So it, this list, it will not be sent to them. It would literally, there'll be a statement from staff that says, "Design Review Committee recommends waiver of this requirement."
Okay.
So it's a little different than what, this does not get sent, conditional uses and rezoning and special uses get exactly what you guys vote on. This will be a recommendation for, it will state that.
Okay.
For that line item at city council when they consider that issue, right? Okay, got it.
All right, good.
Well, that helps a lot. I appreciate that.
So next time around, next time we do something, we could say, "Design Review Committee recommends waiver of this." So we can add that sentence on to it next time, so.
Be less confusing, maybe.
Well, I also want developers to know that when they do business in the city of North Rock, we're open to that, you know. You know, I've changed my position on this from, I guess, a couple of years ago, but, you know, I see these improvements that are made in for half the street in front of a piece of property, whether it's 100 feet long or 200 feet long. And then 20 years later, it's the only street improvement for, you know, the whole street. And then, then when the city does come around to making the street improvements for the rest of the block or the rest of the street, those are in such deplorable conditions, they have to spend extra money to tear them up and rebuild them. So I just don't think that's advantageous to put that burden on a developer. And also, I think it's a burden, a future burden on the taxpayer. So I've kind of want everybody to know, I've kind of changed my position on that. And that's one of the arguments we made during our subdivision committee to go in this direction, so other members of this board, I mean, commission know that. That's one of the discussions we had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
And Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chambers?
Mr. Foster's changed his mind, but I haven't changed mine.
Okay, duly noted. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this application? Any other comments from the committee commissioners on the application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item E is SD 2016-51, Harper Subdivision Lot 1 and 2, replat of Lot, of one lot into two lots located at the southeast corner of Remount and Spriggs. The Development Review Committee met with the applicant, and he agreed to items 1 through 9 and subsections, and the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. That this be approved as submitted. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this application? Any other comments from the commissioners on the application? Please call, or, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
That concludes the Development Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. We'll move into our public hearing. Our first case is rezoned case number 2016-11, to rezoned property located at 14 Remount Road from R1 to C3, and to amend the land use plan from single-family to community shopping to allow for a commercial development. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Please come up and give us your name for the record.
Mike Marler with Marler Engineering Company.
Have we had any comments on this?
Received no comments either way.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this? Any comments from the commissioners on this application? Please call the roll.
Yes.
Blasko.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Deets.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. Get with Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you where to go next.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is rezoned case 2016-12, and conditional use numbers 2016-15, to rezoned property located at 2800 West 58th Street from O1 to C3, and to amend the land use plan from single-family to community shopping to allow for a commercial conditional use for offices with warehouse space. Is the applicant here? Please come up and give us your name, please.
Ryan Meyer.
What is your intention to do here with this property?
We want to move our existing business from a couple of blocks down the road to this location.
Okay. Any comments from, anyone, Mr. Spencer?
Received no comments either way.
Ms. Blasko?
I just want to be, clarify, moving this into a C3 with the special use, they would have to come back for it to ever be zoned multifamily, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners on the application? Please call the roll.
Alexander.
Yes.
Blasko.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Deets.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. See Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next step would be.
Good luck.
Thank you. Next item is item number three, special use case number 2016-16, to allow indoor retail in an I-2 zone located at 10503 Maumell Boulevard. Is the applicant here?
My name is Amos Endler.
Okay. What is it you're wanting to?
Want to put a vintage market inside this building.
Okay. Okay. Has there been any comments, Mr. Spencer?
Received no phone calls for or against it.
Okay. Any comments from anyone in the, or, in the audience? Any comments from any of the commissioners?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Foster?
Is this a new building you're building there, or is it an existing building?
It's an existing building.
Okay. It's a little bit, okay. The configuration on the aerial photographs was a little bit different than this, and when I went by there, it looks like the aerial photographs. That's what kind of confused me. Thank you.
Oh, we have, the, I'm sorry, Ms. Chambers?
Yes, you're looking to use, there's two buildings on here, noted as 10503. Is that, Sean, the two buildings have identical addresses?
Yeah, he's asking for Building B, aren't you?
Yes, Building B.
So that'd be the second building back from Maumell Boulevard.
Okay. And you're just, you're just, so the request is for the entire property, but he's only interested in?
Building B.
Building B.
Correct.
Okay.
So this would be reclassifying the whole property?
The legal description for the property is one large property, but the way it will be written up is for, to allow indoor retail on Building B.
Okay. What about the other buildings, then? Will that change anything for them?
Not at all.
So the proper address is 10503B?
Yep.
Got it. Okay.
But again, if you're heading, if you want to approve it for the whole property, you could do that, because it was legal added that way. So that's something you could discuss with him, if that's where you were heading with that question.
Well, if we did that, then would that not preclude him from using the other buildings as the I-2 use?
This is adds an additional.
It's adding.
So it's a special use. So everything in I-2 is allowed, plus indoor retail.
Okay. So all you're wanting to do, then, is just for the one building?
Yes, that's correct.
Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners on the application? Please call the roll.
Alexander.
Yes.
Blasko.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Deets.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. See Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next step might be.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item number four, special use case 2016-17, has been postponed, and that concludes our regular agenda. We are now open for any public comment. Mr. Chambers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to elaborate briefly on the half-street improvements issue. Basically, we allow, the zoning ordinance and land development ordinance allows, allows waiver of half-street improvements if you have a hardship. So when I say that my position hasn't changed, it's that our laws say, you shall have a hardship, not, I don't want to, or the planning commission doesn't think that that's a prudent use of money. That's not a hardship. So I guess what I'm saying is, we need to change the criteria for granting the waiver, because right now, it's a hardship. It's either grading, or drainage, or you don't, you can't build that half of the bridge, or whatever it is. There's a physical hardship that keeps you from doing that half-street improvement. And I agree with Commissioner Foster, in principle, I really do, that, yeah, I've seen some pretty stupid 100-foot-long half-street improvements built, it's kind of silly. But at the same time, we can't just unilaterally change the rules. If the city council wants to say, well, you can now, if it doesn't appear to be a logical form of development, or it doesn't appear to make logical sense, well, we need to have a framework for saying, it doesn't make logical sense. Or we need to have something in our master street plan that says, if a half-street improvement is shorter than 100 feet, then you don't have to do it. Or, but there needs to be something to hang your hat on, because right now, we're unilaterally saying, I don't support it. And that's, that's not what you're, when you took the oath, you said you'd uphold the rules. Well, the rules say, there's a hardship, okay? So that's my point. I mean, I support, and, I really do. I understand what you're saying, but the rules don't allow us to do that. We have to require it, unless there's a physical hardship.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond? I mean, I'm glad to have this discussion, because I've labored over this issue for over a year, you know, and every time this comes up, I always kind of go along and, but then again, you know, if you say drainage is a problem, or you've got a steep grade, or, you know, whatever, well, all that boils down to, money can fix anything. And so it all boils down to money. And if you say money's not a cost of something, or money's not a hardship, then it is. I mean, it is, you know, because it all boils down to, you know, hey, does he, well, require him to put a retaining wall, or improve the drainage, or fill, or whatever? You know, he says, well, that's a hardship on me. Well, yeah, it's a cost, it's an economic hardship on him. So I don't know how you can get around not classifying a hardship as economic. And that's been what I've kind of labored about. And I don't know the answer to it, you know, so if it's, I'm open to still discuss this, you know, but I'm, like I said, is, I just want to make it advantageous for people to come to our city and, and feel like they're being reasonably treated, when they want to develop a piece of property, or buy a piece of property, or open up a new business here, you know. That's kind of my goal here, and I don't, I want to kind of break down some of those barriers that they may see. Now, don't get me wrong, you know, I've talked to a lot of people about this issue, and the consensus is, in the developers, and landowners, and real estate people around, they like doing business in North Rock, as opposed to its neighboring communities, okay? But I think it can still be improved to, you know, and still not lose any of our control, you know. I mean, you got to have planning, you got to have district, and you know, and you have zoning, because you got to control it. It protects one side of the fence, as it does the other side of the fence on those issues. So I'm still open for more discussion on this, if somebody can convince me otherwise, that, you know, it all boils down to economics on the waiver issue there.
Well, it would appear to me that that is what the waiver application would be for that goes to the city council.
Exactly.
We can recommend for, or recommend not. And ultimately, it's the council's action, whether or not they do recommend it or not. And I would think that it would be them, in their district, to see if that was a prudent action or not. And I don't know how we could go in and, and make a set class that would work for every application. I don't see how we can do that.
Well, I offer several suggestions. Some cities, much like we have a drainage fund, you can pay the in lieu of, okay, and that money is spent in that drainage basin on drainage improvements. In some cities, allow you to pay, in lieu of building half-street improvements, you may pay the per foot, a certain number that's determined, rather than build them, you can just pay this money. And it may not be as much as building improvement, but we would certainly pay toward the street fund. But it gets to a point where, when the city council votes to grant the waiver, they should, I guess they are, I hope they're internally acknowledging that the city will pay for that road. I mean, that's what they, when they grant the waiver, they're saying, we're okay with this, we'll pave that, we'll buy that road later. And the other argument is, when you have incremental development, and everybody develops a little piece of right-of-way, and we grant them waivers, and grant them waivers, and grant them waivers, and then suddenly, that whole area's developed, but still being served by a two-lane road, okay? And, and you've got tremendous traffic, but yet there's no shoulders, it's just a two-lane road, and ditches on the side, and the public is complaining about it, but we granted waivers to everybody to not have to build their little piece of that road. As I said, I understand what you're saying completely, but I argue that maybe staff should look and see what other communities are doing, and come back and say, well, you know, here's some options for you, in terms of alleviating the cost that you refer to. It is a hard, it is an expense. But at the same time, I don't see that the city should bear 100% of the expense of someone developing their land, and they get 100% of the profit, and I get, I get the expense of building the road for them in the future. I don't see the balance in that, okay? That's where I'm trying to get, you're trying to get to equity, and I'm trying to get to equity.
Well, I see the balance.
I see the balance on the other side of the scale from you, I guess, because I, you know. Public, private?
The public, the public is going to be the ones that's going to use that road a lot more than the landowner, you know, by far over the years. So why shouldn't the public pay for it? You know, now, if the city needs to increase their budget for, you know, roads or street improvements, so be it. And back to your comment on, and clarify this on me, I maybe have been of misunderstanding, but, you know, we collect in lieu fee, in lieu of fees for detention drainage, and in lieu of fees for, what are the other ones?
Parking lot?
Yeah. And it was my understanding that those in lieu of fees go into a general fund and not into a specific account. And then I understood, maybe some of them are reimbursed back to the owner if they're not used in a cert. I'm confused on, I've heard all kinds of different arguments about that.
Sort of clear it up that.
Please.
Then in lieu of fee, there's seven or eight basins for the city, drainage basins, and so the money goes into that basin for use inside that basin.
In a separate account.
In a separate account. Each basin has its own account. Now, you can't compare drainage fee in lieu of to, as Mr. Don had said.
Oh, yeah, right.
To, to a street in lieu of.
Right.
We talked about this 10, 12 years ago, that if we were to do something like that, that money could only be set aside for that piece of street in front of that piece of property. You can't apply, like, the drainage applies.
Yeah.
Everywhere.
Right.
But if we were to collect an in lieu of fee for that piece of property, it could only be used on that piece of property.
That's what I understood.
That street.
Yeah, that's what I understood.
No, only in front of that piece of property.
I understand, but if the whole street was being renovated, you could say, well, that money is being spent in front of your property.
Right, yes, correct. And, and so it doesn't really, the drainage is a big picture, and the street would be a little picture.
Yeah, it's a different scenario. And you, that's what I understood before.
Mr. Clifton said that the, this is, the planning commission does not issue waivers. City council issues waivers.
Correct.
So this, the way we're doing it right now, it's really up for the applicant to make their argument in front of city council, to say why they can't, or why they don't want to do that waiver, or that part of the street. So all we can do, really, at the moment, is make a recommendation, do we support it, or do you not support it?
Do you know if?
And the city engineer is also going to make that argument, too.
Yeah, right, right.
Of, does he think that needs to be done to create any circulation of traffic issues?
Do you know if you or any of your staff members, Tim, know what other communities do in regard to, I think it's, boils down to, is, not if you ask for waivers on it, but is it, is it part of their ordinance for that to be done?
Yeah.
Black or, black or white, either they include it as a part of their ordinance, or they don't. Do you know what the consensus is of the other communities around?
We could check into it, but my, I think it's, it's black or white. You either do it, or you don't.
Yeah, but I'm saying, do other cities around here, is?
The ones locally all do it the way we're doing it.
Okay.
And, back to that in lieu of fee, we tried doing in lieu of fees 10, 12 years ago. We can only hold the money for three years, and most of the time.
Yeah.
The project was six years in the future, so we had to give back the money.
Even in, even in a waiver fee, or in lieu of fee?
Yeah, so, so we were holding.
Okay, I knew that's true on when you put up bonds.
Yeah.
But I didn't know it's true on that.
From, and Jason, or, I can't remember the explanation of what it was, but we tried, we tried it for a while, and it ended up, no one ever used it, and we had to give the money back.
Right. Well, I think Mr. Chambers has a good idea of, if you could do a little research, and maybe report back to us next week, and kind of maybe see what, see what the facts are, and maybe we go from there.
Ms. Blasko?
I have two things to say. From someone who deals with that kind of issue every day, trying to keep money specific to a property is going to create an accounting nightmare that the city is going to pay more for than waiving the street improvements. I promise you. If you put it into a basin, as Sean says, you've got one account. You put it into an escrow or a pending account for a specific property, we could have 100 in a month, or two. And then you've got some, you've got to hire someone who deals with nothing but those street improvement accounts, because that has to be kept as a separate animal, and can't be intermingled, because you'd be in a world of trouble. And the second thing is, I got to go, I got to go vote.
Excuse us, thank you, Ms. Blasko.
Well, I just wanted to bring up, you know, have this, start this session in dialogue, because, you know, I think we're all on the same page. We want to make this city the best it can be, and, you know, just because we've done things for so many years, you know, let's talk about that. That's all I'm kind of saying. Appreciate your company.
Ms. Chambers?
Mr. Chambers?
Commissioner Foster, I just want to direct your attention, direct your attention to a road that actually we all know about, and was solved, the problem with it was solved privately. And we required half-street improvements on parts of this road, probably for, Norman, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but probably for 10 years, and that was Counts Massey. And it was, you know, piece here, a piece there, a piece here, a piece there.
Yes, yes.
And then they created Improvement District and did the whole road, and tied everything together, and, and really did a beautiful job. And yes, some, the problem is, is that we do not go in and set a centerline grade and say, "In the future, this road will have the following centerline, and when you do your half-street improvements, you will match that." Well, the problem with it is, is sometimes that centerline's two feet above the existing road, so matching a future centerline doesn't help us out much. But, but they did, that's a case where private enterprise went in and taxed themselves to do that road. I'm all in favor of that. I just personally don't, don't care to pay for things that a developer should pay for as part of, if he's going to make that, that kind of money on that project, he should kick in something for the public's use of, of access to it. He gives, he builds sewer lines and gives those to the sewer department, he builds water lines, give them to the water department, build a road and give it to the city. That's, that just seems equitable to me.
Mr. Spencer and Mr. Tim, will y'all do some research on that, and let's have some discussion on it at our next meeting?
Multi-state.
Okay, that'll be great. Any other comments? Motion made and seconded.
Second.
We adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.